Okay, I want to welcome everyone to the August 2020 official town meeting. It's a special town council Zoom virtual meeting called for 5:00 PM Eastern Time. Time is approximately 5:00 PM. I'd like to have the town clerk roll call, please. Roll call? Roll call? She's not on. Roll call.
Mayor, you have to wait. You have to wait. It takes a second. I'm your people.
Mayor Singer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Einstein? Vice Mayor Einstein?
He's done. I see him.
Yeah, but it's unmuted.
I told you that I'm muted.
I'm trying. It's doing the same thing where it's asking.
Is it unmuted?
Yeah. Councilmember Bernstein?
Yes, here.
Councilmember? Councilmember Luskin?
Here.
And Councilmember Mendel?
Here.
Okay, the official called order. Town clerk, can you mute everyone beside the individual talking, please? Again, today's date is August 18th. I want to welcome everyone to the August meeting. I know this is getting to be more the norm than the exception. Hopefully, we'll be back soon in person with everybody. But until then, this is what we've got to do. First on the agenda is presentations. I believe there are none. Next is motion to set the agenda, additions, deletions, removal of items from the consent agenda, and changes to the agenda. I have none. Council members, do you have any? I'm assuming none.
None.
None. Thank you. Town manager?
Yeah, councilmembers, if you wish to speak or you need to address us, there's a raise your hand option on the screen. Just hit that button and we'll know that you're trying to get our attention and we'll unmute you. Mayor, members of the council, late afternoon, I emailed all of the council and we posted on the website the attachments for the item related to the military, which was sent to you yesterday afternoon via PDF. So that's to be included in today's agenda.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Next is good and welfare. Anyone for good and welfare?
Let's unmute everyone. Anyone who wishes to speak for good and welfare? Please signify by saying yay or saying hello.
Okay, no good and welfare? Then next, I'm sorry, none?
None, sir.
Next is mayor's report. I just want to mention a few items. One is, we're still in the midst of COVID-19. I have to urge everybody to still remember social distancing. Please remember to wear your mask, all the residents. If you're in town and you're walking your dogs, please wear a mask. Construction sites, please wear a mask for a mandatory requirement. Again, we're not out of the woods yet, and we're not going to get out of the woods until everyone does the, what's asked. Social distancing, ask, wear a mask, etc. Do what they can. But we are still on high alert for COVID-19. I know it's back to school. I believe majority of the schools are doing virtual. So that means they're at home. So everyone needs to be careful when they're driving through town. Please abide by the speed limits. Please be careful, especially by the parks, because the kids are not in school or they are in school, but for a limited time. And then they'll be obviously around town. This, we're going to do approve the mileage rate this evening, hopefully. Again, 8.4 mileage is what's proposed. This is the sixth year in a row, no increase to the town's mileage rate, which is hats off to the town manager, finance department, and town manager staff. A great job controlling cost, past costs and controlling future costs. My hats off to you. Last thing is, I'm sorry to announce that this past week, we had an officer that has been with us for over 15 years or about 15 years, Officer Oscar Santana. He was on the midnight shift. He's, everyone I'm sure at town remembers him. He was at many town events. He always had a smile on his face. My hearts go out to him and his family. He's been a longtime dedicated employee and he will be missed. And I know he will not be forgotten by the residents, the police department, and the town staff. So again, sorry for the passing. Just shows you how precious life is, and that's why it's imperative that we abide by what's asked for us for the COVID-19. That's, and I go back to this because it's a serious pandemic and we're not out of the woods. And I want to be out of the woods. I'd love to have in-person council meetings. But again, we're not going to do that until it's safe and everyone abides by what's asked for them. Next, I'm going to ask for the town manager to give me a coronavirus update. I'll turn it over to town manager.
Sure. For mayor and council, I want to just congratulate the community for working with us and trying to keep the community safe. And I want to clear up some rumors. I know that a lot of our residents are going to Channel 10 and looking at their database that indicates that we have 130 or 128 cases in town. We do not have 128 cases in town. That figure takes into account some parts of Aventura, Golden Gates Estates, and believe it or not, even Howland Beach Boulevard. In town, we have 30 confirmed Corona cases confirmed by the Department of Health that we're monitoring closely. As you know, this past month, we've tested over 280 of our residents in town hall and provided them with their test results within 48 hours, and we tested over 50 of our staff members. As the mayor mentioned, we continue to have a mandatory mask wearing for anyone who's outside, who is not engaged in physical activity and who cannot maintain proper distancing. At our beach, we're still keeping social distancing when we provide amenities to our residents. We are only providing amenities to our residents on Fridays, Saturdays, Sundays, and Mondays. On Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, our residents are allowed to enjoy the beach, but there are no amenities offered to them. We will be conducting another round of resident testing the second week of September, right after the budget. So either that Wednesday or Thursday, Michael Glidden, our resident services director, will be putting out an e-blast to that effect to all of our residents. One of the other things that's affecting the town as it relates to COVID-19, believe it or not, is our mail delivery service. We have seen a slowdown of our mail delivery services because the number of employees at USPS are not being able to get overtime to meet our needs. So a new initiative that we launched recently in town is if you have mail that wish, that you wish to drop off in town hall, you pull up to town hall, you give us a call. We'll go out with a basket. You'll put your mail in there and we'll securely keep it and take it to the post office on your behalf. Same thing with packages. We extremely encourage all residents to keep in mind that there are no groups of gatherings of 10 or more. If you wish to have a party at your house and you anticipate having more than 10 members that are not your immediate family members, that you reach out to my office so we can grant you a permit to have that gathering. In addition, the tot lot continues to be closed, as well as the basketball courts. The basketball courts will not reopen until after the construction of the new civic center, which will be breaking ground in October. Michael Glidden will be communicating to all residents and our councilmembers about our grand opening or groundbreaking ceremonies that will be held in October. We remind everyone to continue to be safe. Soon, in the next couple of weeks, you'll be getting another goodie bad, goodie item delivered to your house. Remind all residents, if you are in need of gloves, hand sanitizers, masks, or toilet paper, the town has that readily available to provide to you. Just give us a call at town hall and we'll drop that off at your house. We'll be also providing a 100-gallon drum with hand sanitizer that you can refill your own personal bottles at the beach pavilion. So if you have a usable bottle that you wish to have refilled with hand sanitizer, that'll be going out next week into our beach area, and the beach tenants will help you with that. And as a reminder, last thing, is that you are still required to wear a mask when going to the beach and show your ID. Residents are required to show your IDs. The mayor and I can participate every week, twice a week, with the mayor's task force and the governor's task force as it relates to COVID-19, and we'll continue to monitor that. And also, one last, sorry, one last thing. As schools begin to reopen and as our need for more recreational activities become important to our residents, our resident services department will be putting together some virtual activities, like virtual yoga and some programming for our resident or youth. So look forward to reading about all those exciting things that we'll have coming in the newsletter. With that, mayor, there's no more COVID updates.
Okay, perfect. Thank you for the update. I'll move on to council comments. I'll start with Councilwoman Luskin. Judy?
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Again, my condolences to Oscar Suarez. It's difficult to lose a, an employee, and the employees of Golden Beach have been with us so long. It's family. So it's very, very difficult, and my condolences to the family. Alex, perhaps when you get a few minutes, you can just let us know what's going on with the bids for the pump station. I see it was online that I think you've opened them up. On the mail service, I got the notice today of what was going on and for the census. And I did get a few phone calls today because there were some residents that didn't get the mail. So they didn't even understand that we sent something out in regards to it. Beyond that, I wish everybody a healthy, happy life through coronavirus and hope that we get through with this as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, I'll move to Councilman Bernstein.
I'd just like to share my thoughts and reflections on Officer Santana and sending out my prayers to him and his family. I feel like Golden Beach lost a member of its family today, and it was, this past week, and it's been, it was sad. Nothing else. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Mandel?
Yeah, just as everyone else has done, just want to echo my condolences to Officer Santana, as well as to Golden Beach Police Department. It's a tough loss. I'm sorry about this. On another subject, just wanted to thank the administration, as well as council and mayor for putting on the COVID testing over the last month. I think it's been a real positive, a real positive for the community. Sorry about that. It's been a real positive for the community. I think I've gotten a lot of calls, a lot of people have appreciated that, and hopefully we continue that throughout the duration of this. That's it from me.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Bernstein, I mean Einstein, excuse me.
Yes, as said by the other council people and mayor, again, my condolences to Officer Santana's family and the police department. It's a sad event, especially just retired, and it's horrible. Anyway, another note to mail. In terms of the ballots for the elections, I don't know if we want to put out something that we may be collecting or we're not. Okay, so we don't want to do that. On another note, I just heard that Rabbi Berkman, Birken's wife from Aventura Temple is going to be doing the ceremony on behalf of the Democratic Party. I think it takes place on Thursday. But whether you're Republican or Democrat, she's from Aventura, and I think it's something nice out of the community. And I think he's been at some of our events in the past. I think that's kind of nice, but I know we want to move the meeting right along, so, in my comments.
Thank you. Moving right along, a town manager report.
Mayor, it's always sad for the staff and for our community to lose an employee, especially one who's been with us for 15 years. And I know that I speak on behalf of all of our employees that Oscar will be missed. The town is working hand in hand with the family to coordinate the services. They've asked for a very private service. We will be there honoring him and his years of service to the law enforcement community with honor guards. We are participating in sharing the burden of the service with the family. And so as we get more information, we'll make it available. And Michael will put that information on the website so our residents can either send an email or send a text to the family to show their support. But know that he, the town will be represented well. The chief and my executive staff will be there to honor Oscar Sergeant Santana. When he retired, he was promoted to the rank of sergeant. And so we'll be there, and he will be deeply missed. Couple reminders for the community. On September 8th is our first budget hearing. It will be Zoom budget hearing at 7:00 PM. On September 22nd is the second budget hearing, our second budget hearing. It will also be a Zoom meeting scheduled for 7:00 PM. In the month of September, we will have two business meetings. The first business meeting is scheduled for September 8th at 6:00 PM, one hour before the budget hearing. So the business meeting will be September 8th at 6:00 PM. And if a second business meeting is needed, it will immediately follow the budget hearing on the 22nd. So let me say that again. 6:00 PM on the 8th is the business meeting.
No, you said 7:00 PM. Oh, I'm sorry. Say it again.
6:00 PM, 6:00 PM on the 8th is the business meeting, followed by a 7:00 PM budget hearing. And on the 22nd, budget hearing at 7:00, and if there's any unfinished business meeting items, it'll be immediately following the budget meeting. So 6:00 and 7:00, and then 7:00 until the end. And that's September 8th and 22nd, and both of them will be via Zoom. The other important thing to mention to the council and to our residents is that the numbers for our budget have already been released. They were released via email yesterday, and they are on the website. The budget books will be delivered to everyone's house, council, and posted online by the 28th of this month. So budget verbiage will be posted on then. As it relates to our pump station, we are currently in the cone of silence. We're waiting for bidders to respond. We had over 23 participants during the meeting. We hope to award that project sometime in October, if not November. And with that said, our condolences again to the Santana family and his daughter. There's no more report.
Perfect. Thank you. Town attorney, do you have anything for us? Steve?
No, nothing.
Thank you. Moving right, moving right along to ordinance's second reading. There are none. Moving to ordinance's first reading, there are none. Under the Quajag judicial resolution, there is one. A resolution at town council approving a variance request for 477 Ocean Boulevard to permit the installation of pool equipment. With the Quajag resolution, town attorney, anyone that's going to speak, I'd like to please raise your hand so they can swear you in. If you plan on speaking regarding this Quajag judicial resolution, please raise your hand or announce your name. Okay, please, town clerk, can you swear them in?
Yes, sir. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and the truth?
Do.
I would need everybody to unmute and just say that they do. Please.
Does that just un?
Yes.
So I'm showing two people, town manager and Jean Garrity. Is that correct?
Pretty close. Jean-Marc Girardin, yeah.
Okay, I was close. Sorry about that. Town clerk, want to read it to record?
Yes, sir. A resolution of the town of Golden Beach, Florida, authorizing and approving a variance request for the property located at 477 Ocean Boulevard, Golden Beach, Florida, 33160, to permit the pool equipment to be installed in the south side yard, six feet from the property line, instead of the 10-foot setback required by code. I need a.
A motion to approve?
Second.
Okay, town manager, go on. Can't hear you. Who is the maker of the motion?
I'll make the motion.
I thought it was Hybe's.
So.
All right, Bernstein made the motion second by Mandel. I'll keep this item very quickly, very quick. So this particular resident is an undersized lot on Ocean Boulevard. It's an existing home. Our resident, who's been a lifelong member of Golden Beach, would like to remodel his property. And one of the things that he's doing is he's trying to beautify the deck. Typically, on Ocean, we require all pumps to go on the rear of the property, unlike the interior of town. But because that lot is an undersized lot, he's made the request to put the pool pump equipment on the south side in his setback area. The neighbor to the south does not object to the pump location there. If this property were to ever change hands, and the new owner wishes to remodel or knock down the house and build new, this variance would not run with the property. It only runs with this particular homeowner. We're strongly recommending in favor of this variance so that we can see a, I love it. It's one of our older homes on Ocean. Get a little bit of a facelift and try to get some improvements there. We're super excited to see the remodeling plans that he has for the facade of the building, which is one of the things that held it back from moving forward to VRAD approval. But we are asking your support of this, of this variance.
Any council comments?
None.
None? None? Anyone else would like to speak on it? No? Roll call, please. Let's see.
Muted.
Mayor Singer?
Yes, it's fine.
Vice Mayor Einstein?
Yes.
Councilmember Bernstein?
Yes.
Councilmember Mandel?
Yes.
Councilmember Luskin?
Yes.
Okay, the resolution passes. Move on to the civic center complex master plan update. Town manager?
Sure. So we're currently receiving the plan about 30%. My staff and our consultants are working with some comments and revisions to the 30% plans. Those plans were sent to you as part of the agenda packet. And so any feedback that you may have, I would appreciate it. Know that we've already done all the survey work on the property. We're looking to break ground sometime in October. Just today, we've approved the millwork, and so the project is moving along in next year's budget. There is a $50,000 allocation for the area underneath the building. We're still going to be working with Councilman Bernstein and the council to come up with a solution for the area of the parking area. It's too early in the design to focus on that area, so as we get closer to the council. But the project is moving along in a very timely manner.
Perfect.
I have a question for you.
Sure.
I see in the, in the agenda that we got, I didn't see anything on the 30% completion.
I'm sorry, Madam Clerk, you'll get that out to them right away, correct? Okay, and again, that's just a PDF version of the plans. It's very difficult to, you know, it's, it's what you already have. It's the design of the building. The clerk will get that out to you right away. I apologize. That was supposed to be a part of the package.
Thank you.
Okay, moving right along to the consent agenda. The following items on the consent agenda. Official minutes of the June 16th, 2020, special town council meeting. Special town council Zoom virtual meeting. Item number two, a resolution of the town council authorizing a joint project agreement with FDOT for turf and landscape maintenance. Item oh four, a resolution of the town council approving renewal agreement with the dental and vision insurance. Item number five, a resolution of the town council approving the interlocal agreement for federally funded subwork with the Miami-Dade County for the reimbursement of expenses incurred during COVID-19 pertinent to the CARES Act. Item number six, a resolution of the town council authorizing payment of $2,500 to the Alonzo and Tracy Morning, PTSA. And item number seven, a resolution of the town council authorizing the purchase of two Yamaha Marine motors for the town marine patrol vessels. Those items, two through seven, are on the official agenda. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Anyone oppose?
Aye.
I'm sorry. No opposing?
Aye.
It's everybody?
Yes.
Okay. Consent agenda passes. Moving on to item number P, town resolution. The town, a resolution of the town council ratifying the maximum proposed mileage rate for the year end 2020 and 2021.
A resolution of the town council of the town of Golden Beach, Florida, ratifying the maximum proposed mileage rate for fiscal year 2020, 2021, that was transmitted to the property officer of Miami-Dade County pursuant to the requirements of Florida statutes and the rules and regulations of the Department of Revenue of the state of Florida and providing for an effective date.
Okay, town manager?
Yeah, mayor, members of the council.
A motion.
Oh, yeah, motion, mayor.
I'm sorry, excuse me. A motion to approve? I need a motion?
Motion to approve?
I make a motion to adopt the mileage rate.
Mandel, Einstein. Okay, so mayor, members of the council, more important to our residents. In putting together this year's budget, we had to take a couple of things into consideration. One, the global pandemic and all of the cost factors that we have incurred as part of our capital improvement programs. And that list is pretty extensive, and it'll be presented during the town's budget. What we're doing is a couple of creative things this year. Because our debt service fund, fund balance, is, has a fund balance of over $800,000, we're allocating $200,000 of that fund balance for our debt service needs. We're then taking the debt service of mileage rate, we're decreasing it to only generate $700,000 and moving that money into our operating expense. What that's going to do is going to do something that we weren't anticipating. We were pledging $1.2 million of our fund balance numbers for our capital improvement program. And what Maria, myself, and your directors have been able to do is we've been able to allocate in this year's budget and in next year's budget that $1.2 million for our capital improvement, allowing us not to need to use the fund balance for those programs. That is a great thing for Golden Beach. It would allow us to increase our fund balance, keep a secure fund balance of over $2.5 million. In order to do that and to be responsible, this year, we did something very unique. If you remember back in 2008 and 2009, when the housing crisis occurred, we did two budgets. We presented a budget for the coming year, and then we presented an anticipated budget. We've done the same thing this year. In your email yesterday, you received the town's proposed budget and anticipated budget for the following year, for the 2022 fiscal year. And so what we're recommending is over the course of the next three years, that you allow us to manipulate the town's mileage rate that our revenue needs so that we can allocate the revenues for both our general fund and our debt service fund. Another thing that we did this year is we put in some austerity measures, and we had some positions in the city that we have frozen or we have eliminated. We've done that. We've done that, and we're recommending that only on a temporary basis. After the '22 budget year, we'll be asking for those positions to be allowed to be refilled. But by allowing us to keep those positions vacant over the course of the next two years, we'll be able to generalize some savings. So I am recommending tonight that you adopt a general fund mileage rate of 7.772 for the purposes of announcing it through the TRIM process, and a debt service mileage rate of .628. After we set the mileage rate tonight, we can only lower it. We cannot raise it. This mileage rate gives us a combined mileage rate of 8.4 mils. And as you know, when I was sworn in in 2007, we made a commitment to our residents that not only will we lower our mileage rate, which we did from 8.59 to 8.5 mils six years ago, through your efforts and through your leadership, the mayor and I recommended to lower the mileage rate one more time to 8.4 mils. And it has been a combined 8.4 mils now for our sixth year. It is my commitment to this council and to our residents that irrespective of what may happen in the, with the global pandemic and with property values, we will maintain a combined mileage rate of 8.4 mils. Now, in the, in the interest of full transparency with you and with our residents, next year, I do intend to pledge another $500,000 of our debt service fund, fund balance and manipulate the mileage rates again to still have an 8.4 mileage rate, but to allow us to generate more money in the general fund for those capital projects that we will be giving to you in the, in the budget workshops on the 8th and on the 22nd. This combined mileage rate of 8.4 mils is fair. It is, it is tested. It is a conservative approach. The only factor that we are still negotiating, and it's an unknown, is our renewal rates for health insurance for our employees and its members. However, Mayor Singer and I both agree that because we increased our contingency fund by an additional X number of dollars, once we negotiate with our insurance carriers, whoever that may be, we could allocate that reserve that we put in our contingency to meet our insurance needs for our residents, or for our employees. And so that's the only factor that hasn't been decided is our renewal rates for insurance. If we decided to stay with our current carrier and renew with them, the money that we've set aside in contingency is more than sufficient to meet. set aside in contingency is more than sufficient to meet that renewal demand. However, we feel that this is the year where the mayor and I will be looking at drastic changes to our insurance offerings to generate a savings for our resident, or for, for our budget, while still being responsible to our employees and the members of the plan. So we're still working out those kinks, but we still feel very confident the combined milled rate using a 7.772 general fund milled rate and a .628 debt service fund is very responsible, and I strongly urge you to adopt it. I also strongly urge all residents and council to start looking at the numbers that were emailed to you and that are on our website, and when the books are delivered, that you read the book in its entirety. With that, Mayor, I stand ready for questions.
Okay. Any questions? And I want to make sure everyone understands. I'm just going to go around the table. Councilman Einstein, Vice Mayor Einstein, do you have any questions?
No.
Councilman Mandell, do you have any questions?
No, leave them for the budget meeting next month.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Bernstein?
No.
Councilwoman Luskin?
No.
Okay, so we're approving a total combined milled rate of 8.4. 7.7720 is for the operating, general operating, and .6280 is proposed for the debt service for combined milled rate of 8.4. With that, I'm going to close it to the council. Any public comments? I, I don't see everybody, but I'm assuming there's no public comments. So with that, I'll close it to the public. A roll call, town clerk, please.
Mayor Singer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Einstein?
Councilman Einstein?
Yes.
Councilmember Mandell?
Yes.
Councilmember Luskin?
Yes.
Councilmember Bernstein?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. Mayor, if I may, real quick, I want to talk about the budget process, because we're accustomed to having a very lengthy budget presentation and a very lengthy budget evening. My intent is to meet one-on-one with each members of the council and go through the line items as we've done typically during budget hearings, but because our budget hearing is a Zoom budget hearing, we will be providing a summary to all of our residents via the newsletter this year. That summary will give what, what the changes are in our budget. Our residents are going to be encouraged to email and write to us so we can answer those questions for them during the Zoom meeting. We will give a general synopsis of all of the operating expenses and all of our personnel costs, and we will detail for you what our capital budget is. We will not go line by line and department like department like we've done in years past. It's not feasible in this type of an environment. So I'm hoping that each council member will dedicate a few minutes of your time, as you always do to me, so we can go through the budget, line item by line item, so I can explain to you some of the changes that we've done this year in order to meet our, our financial obligations, and I hope that you support the format which we're going to be presenting. I feel that providing via the newsletter to all of our residents a budget summary gives them a more insight look of what we're proposing in the budget, allowing them two weeks to look over it, to provide us with information so we can address it during the Zoom meeting. Our intent is that we are going over each of the department and the changes before the meeting, and that we only address concerns that are brought or from the budget. It's what most cities are doing, because the Zoom process, as you can tell, with muting and unmuting and re-asking questions, it becomes very difficult. And any, any ongoing, or any, any, any ongoing disputes or any uncertainty between council members, we'll be able to iron them out with our one-on-one hearings, and if there's still a matter of this pending, because a council member and I can't meet eye to eye on the pending priority, those clearly will be brought to you, and I hope you can understand that we be a little bit more flexible this year as we move forward with our budget process. That's number one. And then number two, I'd like to remind all of our council members and our residents that over the course of the next few weeks, you will be seeing individuals coming door to door with census shirts and census masks knocking on your doors, asking you to participate in the census. So please be worried of that, because they will start coming into town over the next few weeks. Those are the announcements that I have. I just want to remind everyone one last time, 6:00 PM on the 8th for business meeting, 7:00 PM for budget, 20 seconds, 7:00 PM, followed by business meeting. And as soon as we have information as it relates to Officer Sergeant Santana's funeral details, we will disseminate that both via our website and as an email to our council members. Mayor, thank you for letting me update quick.
Okay. Thank you, town manager, and commend you on the budget. I'm sorry, go on.
Sorry. As a reminder to our residents and our council that immediately following this meeting, there is a City of North Miami Beach Council meeting as it relates to the water issues, and I strongly encourage all residents and council members to participate as you'd like. Michael Glidden and myself will be representing the town during that hearing, and that's today at 6:00 PM.
Is there, is there a link that can be circulated to everyone?
Yes, it was, yes, it was sent to you yesterday, sir.
Okay, it was on that, okay, I didn't notice it was on there, thank you.
From my office, okay.
Thank you. There are no items on discussion, so with that, I'll make a motion to adjourn. I need a motion and a second.
Second.
Motion.
Okay. With that, I want to appreciate, I appreciate everyone attending. Again, these are unusual times, but we did a great job. Town staff, thank you, Lisette, great job. Town manager and finance director, great job, and chief and Linda, everyone, great job, and thank you. With that, we're signing off.
And thank you, Michael, and everyone else, thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Thanks, guys. Thanks, Steve.
Bye-bye. Thank you, guys.